Today, if we get out in time, I got Capbridge and outreach meeting with Eldon for sales. Tomorrow's outreach meeting with Owensville, bicentennial meeting at 3:00 in communities. So that's all I've got. Okay. Bids and contracts. Approval and signing of annual contract with nurse practitioner for health department.
Do we need to sing happy birthday?
No.
I was just gonna tell you on the phone that if I want to embarrass you in front of everybody.
It's okay. Thank you. Thank you. This is just our annual renewal contract with Heather Hines, the nurse practitioner that comes in twice a month to do the family planning services. No increase in the fee from last year.
Okay.
Yep.
I didn't realize her social was on there, so I'll have to block that out before it's... Can we talk about her social before, when it's posted to her? Thank you. You need one with it on there, don't you, Dennis?
Huh?
Do you need one with it on there?
I probably have it already.
Okay. So how work did you block out?
Close. All right, I'm able that we approved the approval and sign the contract with Heather Hines.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval and signing of renewal 2018-35 Airmark Uniform Services.
This is the second renewal with Airmark Uniform Services for out of public works. They are proposing 83% increase and public works is okay with it.
Okay.
So, public guarded maintenance ever talked to you about getting in on that? If they got any guys that will need some pants? And I know that's come up a couple of times with their, all the bleach and stuff they're using right now and running those.
Jeff was, I've heard what far as what being you talked about.
Okay.
I haven't heard anything from them.
Okay.
I'm sure we can add people to our uniform, but the only additional cost would probably be, ours says Coca-Cola Public Works on the tag, so I'm sure, I mean, they get the...
I think they were more concerned about pants.
Yeah, well, jeans would probably add to our contract. I don't know how we did billing, but...
All right, we can figure it out, so. All right, we're gonna be good.
Good.
Yep.
Maybe that we approve and sign the renewal with Airmark Uniform Services.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval and signing of renewal 2019-29 Pro Energy Solutions.
This is the first renewal for 2019-29 for our natural gas. They decided to keep the costs as the same as last year at .14.
That was good?
Yep.
Maybe that we approve and sign the renewal with Pro Energy Solutions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have any unfinished business? No, good. New business, accounts payable review.
Sorry. I'd ask for approval of accounts payable pending review.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of CARE Act application requests.
Okay, this was an internal application request by Michael Cootie from Pranger Family Center. I do have two copies if you want. I think I emailed them to you. And I'll just let Michael talk about what he wants here.
Good.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Now, the request is for three iPads. Because of the virus, we're not having anyone coming into our center. So we will use those for counseling. We'll use that for family sessions and for them to get psychiatric assessments and evaluations at the center so that we can get that in a very timely fashion. So it would be with our two case managers and our clinical director that it would be for. And that would be through a state contract that we have with ASCA.
I thought we'd already approved this, but... Is that not the case?
Are these additional?
Yes, three additional.
Yeah, these are additional.
We've bought, we've had an application for computers and laptops, but these were different. We did bring it up last week and then we talked about it, wasn't on the agenda, so we wanted to have, brought Michael up here.
And these are Wi-Fi, so they're not Internet connected, so it'd be Wi-Fi only.
I'm good with it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, sorry.
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you.
We'll let you know.
Can we use a psychiatric?
So this is just going to BKD, the center?
Yeah, it's just going to BKD.
But we're buying it and then the reimbursement is going to BKD.
So do I wait for this to come back from another approval before I order them?
Yes, that's the way I see it, yeah. This is going to BKD and then it's coming back to us for approval.
You'll let me know when to go in order.
Yep.
Yep.
So it's not a reimbursement?
Well, I did have, I know the urgency and you were worried about it taking so long. So we did talk to Brian about going ahead and getting it ordered. I figured if it doesn't get approved...
So you weren't here Thursday, but that's what, we could have approved it on Thursday had it done and...
Yeah, so he, everything's taken a while to get stuff in, so...
We're basically approving the purchase of it today.
You're basically approving the application to send to BKD.
And then it's gonna come back to us to approve again.
But in the meanwhile, we're still ordering it.
Right.
But in the meanwhile, we're ordering it.
Yeah.
So time is of the essence here and Michael needs the stuff, so why don't we just buy him and get him?
Well, it sounds like that's already been ordered.
If they're not approved by BKD, they will come out of other funding.
That's right.
Okay. Clear as mud. So we have a procedure, but we don't have a procedure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I can pound on that one all day if you want to.
No.
Approval of...
Come on, keep thinking about, keep thinking about sunny skies and playing golf yesterday.
Agreement.
Okay, I got you. I don't order.
Okay, you did.
The one that we just did was the Pranger one, so if you go back to that.
To approval of CARES Act application requests.
Okay, Julie, I'm gonna let you take over. I've confused enough.
Good thing you're going on vacation.
Yes. I'm sorry, Julie, I missed that.
I can't see you and I'm also having echo.
Can't see him? Is he here? Our seats.
I can't see you. You may just need to turn your camera, can you turn your camera on, Debbie?
Well, I don't usually have to turn it on. It's plugged in and the cap's off of it. I would've got you dizzy by now, sure. Oh, here. Now can you see somebody? Yeah.
Yay! Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, so we'll get started. We've got quite a few funding recommendations to go through and a lot of pending requests as well. So that'll be the bulk of our time. Just to give you an update, we, I believe, Kristen, you guys are ready to submit the report for September 30th?
We're just waiting on that one that's gonna be approved today.
Okay, perfect. So, and then we'll turn around and the bulk of the reporting will be done on the October 13th report. That's where a lot of the CARES Act funding that's been approved recently will go. So we'll turn around and then get busy, ready for that reporting. And then, as we talked about, we're also in the middle of creating the protocol for subrecipient monitoring. So once we get that vetted and worked through our system, we'll send you that information, kind of the process that we'll go through to monitor these subrecipients that have already been awarded. So other than that, I'm gonna just turn it over to Leanne and she's gonna walk us through the funding recommendations.
All right, thanks, Julie. The first four items are from a municipality. That's grant number A 306. We have face masks. We have video interviewing software. That's some video software that they're using to conduct job interviews without having to do that in person. You'll notice the amount that we are recommending is less than the amount requested. That's because it's an annual subscription and this grant will only go through December 30th. So we had to prorate that amount. Six electrostatic sprayers and then some other sanitizer spray bottles. The next item is a private school. That's for a water bottle filling station. You may have noticed many places have turned off or blocked off their water fountains and many people are switching over to something where you bring your own water bottle and fill it up there at the drinking fountain area. So that's what this is. The next two items, beginning with D, are internal requests. The installation of the plastic seats in the sheriff vehicles. That is estimated at 15,000. It's kind of a rough estimate based on how many hours it takes to install all of those. But Sheriff Wheeler estimated 15,000 should be able to do that. And then the $100 is the last remaining expense from March through June for a hose for one of the electrostatic sprayers. I think that was for an extra hose. The last three items are from a nonprofit. Those were the items we brought to you last week. We just wanted to leave those on the list so they don't fall off the radar. They're still eligible and you can still choose whether you want to approve them or not, but they're still remaining on the list. And that's all the new items we have for you today. The next section that totals 2.5 million consists of applications we've received, things that had incomplete documentation that we've communicated back to the applicant and let them know what we need in order to evaluate their application. These were as of Friday afternoon, so we've had several things come in since then. You know, we have to have kind of a date that we cut it off as far as what we present to you, but these things are ongoing every day. So we've got several more pieces of documentation that we're reviewing and even, I think, seven new applications that came in yesterday that aren't reflected on this list. The next big group that totals 1.4 million, those are all municipalities. I think many of those are going to soon either drop off the list or move up to the needing documentation category. I think now that our municipalities are clear, that this is reimbursement only, those requests will likely be withdrawn and we'll hope to have that resolved this week. The next group, starting with G, are small businesses. We've not reviewed those at this time. They're just on hold until the commission is ready to start entertaining small business requests. The next two items totaling a little over 100,000. Those are things that we have communicated to the applicants that based on the current guidance that the commission has decided on at this time, that those are currently ineligible. So that's for unemployment expenses and for lost revenue. And those are two items communicated on your website that won't be eligible at this time. And we'll just keep track of those because as we get into November, December, if you decide something differently, those could be a possibility, but we're just, we've told them at this time, those are not being considered. And then the final section there are just requests that have been withdrawn prior to us bringing them to you. And those total 28,000.
Okay.
So if you wanna go back to our lists of eligible items, if there's any questions you have there for us.
I don't have any questions and I'm good with all of them.
Yeah, me too.
A, C, and D, obviously we're gonna hold off on F, right? Till we get the others in?
Tomorrow's the deadline, so...
Yeah, it's 30.
So we could hold those off until Thursday if you want.
I didn't have a conflict on that private school, did I?
Leanne, was there any conflict on those private schools? I don't really have those applications.
Yeah, actually, now that you say that, there might be. Let me pull that up.
One of the things while she's doing that too is we were gonna go back and add to this list, there are internal costs that were originally approved, things like BKD fees and just some additional internal costs that we want to include on this list. We'll do that at the bottom just so that you can get a full sense of all of the dollars that will be ultimately going against the commission approved or the commission amount of $9,300,000. So we'll bring that to you on Thursday. And any of the additional items that have provided or we receive documentation, we'll bring those to you on Thursday as well.
So while you're looking up to see if there's a conflict or not, um... On the municipalities, that's all strictly reimbursements, right? That's what our procedure is at this point?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so if they have something, but they're not sure it's gonna be covered by the CARES Act money, can they bring it to you and get it approved? Kind of like what we just did with Michael's computers? We approved the purchase, then we're gonna purchase it, then we're gonna submit the application.
So one thing, one thing we can do is, you know, the process has been all along that it's only reimbursement.
Right.
As we move into October, I mean, one of the things I wanted to visit with you all about anyway is, is kind of what we wanna do now with, if you call it phase three or the October process. If you wanted to open up items for applications that have to be... So it gets a little tricky, but we can do this. It would be applications that are being made. There's not a reimbursement phase, but it's an approval phase. Then what they have to do, they get the money and we then do more, kind of a... We do more subrecipient monitoring versus upfront monitoring to approve it. Does that make sense?
Okay, so where I'm going with this is I've talked to city councilmen and their issues. You know, some of the stuff they haven't purchased yet, but they don't know if it's gonna necessarily qualify or if we're gonna approve it. So why don't we do the process the same as what we do internally? And if they wanna come up here and say, "We wanna buy radios so we can social distance." These folks are, to help with all the permits and stuff, they need to be off-site more. We need to know if you guys will approve it and if it's gonna qualify before we go and buy it. So is that a process that we can do? And I mean, I'm gonna leave that up to y'all too, but I, I think it's, it's what we're doing for ourselves, so why can't we do it for them?
Yeah, we absolutely can. What if, I just wanted to be clear that what that will mean is we'll just do more monitoring on the back end, meaning that to confirm they spent the money the way they were supposed to spend it, you know? But we can certainly do that. And other counties, municipalities, states are doing that as well, so...
We can give them the money after they...
If we wanted to make that phase three, we could certainly do that.
Julie, can we still do that as a reimbursement, though? Like, can we give them the upfront approval and then they go buy it and we reimburse them for it?
That's kinda what I...
Yes, we can do that. It would just be like approving, approving a grant budget and then we only disperse the funds as they submit actual expenses for reimbursement. It just means coming back in front of you a few more times with those reimbursement requests.
Or, or if, if you've approved it and then they submit their request, as long as it meets the requirements, we can put it forth to you all that this has been moved forward, you know, for the purchase. So we can bring it back to you a second time for approval or we can provide it as information, whichever you want. Cause when you think about what's being done internally is, once you've approved it, then at that point, are you, I don't think they're having to approve it again, right?
Well, I guess those payments are actually coming through when you all review the AP...
Yeah.
...payments, right?
Yes.
As a whole, like you did at the beginning of this meeting?
Yes.
So they would probably just be part of that process?
Yep. So the short answer is yes, we can do that. What we can do is, is just draft the process. We could present that to you on Thursday, which essentially will mirror what's being done internally for the county.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
I just thought it would be easier for them to deal with their budget too, because they know it's gonna be coming back. A lot of it's needed and they wanted to get it, but some of them are some big money items and they're not gonna get reimbursed.
When the internal application's here, we wanted you guys to see before we submitted them to BKD. So you guys were on the same page that that's what the priorities are for the county purchases. So that's why we bring it here before we send it to them. Even like those iPads, we probably knew that was gonna be eligible, so that's why we went ahead and ordered them. If it doesn't come through, that they approve it, then we will have to eat that cost somewhere else. But if you do that for like the cities and whoever else too, that could be potentially, you're giving them approval that that's eligible, but they go out and maybe buy something a little different than what they said they were gonna buy because of, oh, they couldn't get it because, you know, the ordering, the supplies take too long or something. So we would, I would think, be on the hook for that at that point.
Yeah, I mean, we could do like a conditional, you know, that this is a conditional approval.
Okay.
And just draft language to that end. But we would have to go on the back, back end just to be sure all of the compliance requirements were met afterwards.
But you have applications already, right, for most of them from the cities?
Yes.
Yeah, so you've, you've got the applications.
Correct.
Correct, yes.
Now, in some cases, we may actively go back to them for additional information, just more from understanding, you know, what the process is. But, so they would, they might move from where they are now to awaiting follow-up from applicant, meaning we've asked questions. But if you all want to have them come before you, then, you know, we can certainly communicate that through our website, through the process on the application and go from there.
And we do have three other large items on the list. We'll probably four, but there's a public school and a couple, let's see, two or three. Well, one nonprofit and then two healthcare providers that have some rather large requests out there. That's in the awaiting follow-up from applicant category. And on some of those, I think they have not actually spent the funds yet. And so that, you know, would probably be a good option for some of those organizations too, especially the smaller ones that might not incur that cost otherwise. Might not incur that cost unless they knew it was going to be reimbursed.
So are you guys gonna make a proposal on Thursday for phase three and include that into phase three? Is that what the plan is to potentially do that approval before purchase?
Right, and then just so that I'm clear, do we still want to hold all of these into October and continue kind of just looking at what we get before we decide? Is there anything differently that we want to do in October in terms of small business just as we start to think through communicating that to the public? Cause right now, we've said we're gonna hold everything to 9:30, seeing what else we get, knowing that we have this plus the other thing that I believe is not on this list. You can correct me, Leanne. But the testing for the schools, the contact tracing that we talked about last time, where they were gonna hire some temporary workers.
Right, we didn't have an estimate just yet on the hours for that.
Yeah.
We're still working on number of hours to get you that estimate.
Okay.
That's fine.
Perfect, all right.
But Thursday will do...
The question on the table right now is, is there anything you wanna do differently for anything we have as of 9:30 that you would want to go ahead and fund? Or do you wanna move that on forward into October?
Well, Thursday we'll do the small business requests, right?
Okay.
Cause we were, and not for profits, cause we were holding all those.
Are you guys gonna have all those ready if someone still applies tomorrow? I would say Tuesday might be a better option there, just in case stuff comes in tomorrow yet.
Since the 30th is the deadline.
The 30th is the deadline.
Yeah, yeah, I think Tuesday would be better because we are getting a pretty good flow of documentation in right now that we've requested over the past week or so, plus new things that are coming in which seem to be increasing in volume as we are approaching the September 30 deadline. as we are approaching the September 30 deadline.
So then on, I think she's, if we could approve the top part of this today and maybe leave out the Fs for next Tuesday, plus the small business and nonprofits, and then maybe how we're gonna handle, how you guys, options for handling Phase Three.
Okay, so we're gonna do this to where they can come up, get the okay from us, get the okay from BKD, make the purchase, and then we reimburse them? Do we skip over that or decide that?
Whatever, that's the options I was thinking maybe she'd bring to you on Thursday.
Oh, we're gonna talk about Thursday?
Oh, we can talk today if you're ready to make that.
Yeah, I mean, if you're ready to, I mean, we can just document the process if that's...
So that's what you're talking about, the proposal on Thursday?
I mean, you can do it today, if you're ready to do it.
Yeah.
Then we wouldn't really have anything on Thursday.
But they want to have their proposal in writing so that they have their policy and procedure for us to approve, so we don't really need to wait.
Or they can write it up.
Yeah, I mean, we can write it up.
That's what I'd like to do.
I just want to be clear what we're doing because it will require, right now, the way the application works is you cannot complete the application unless you include receipts, like it won't let you go forward. And so it's not a big deal, but we just, I'll need to talk with the programmer to get them to amend that. And so I just want to be sure that I understand our process. If there's any changes, we can make that all at once to the programmer, so...
But do you have to do that?
If I understand correctly, what we would say...
We can do an internal approval first.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Jeff.
So do you have to do that though? Because we can do an internal approval. I wasn't saying you had to change your whole program. They get it approved, we all review it and see if it qualifies. And then they're like, okay, we go buy it now, we submit the receipt, and then they can complete the form.
Okay, that's fine.
Approve it before they approve it?
It's just like our internal one. We don't, we're not actually completing that until we get a receipt.
Well, the question is, if something doesn't qualify through them, so you give your okay, but it doesn't pass the test when it goes to BKD, you're now spending someone else's money. In our circumstance, if the iPads didn't qualify, we would pay for those out of somewhere else.
If BKD says no, it doesn't qualify, it stops there.
Yeah, but if we approve the application before it goes to BKD, right?
We just approved it for Michael, it's the same thing.
It's our people, it's our people, our purchases.
But see this, okay, so then are you okay with approving delinquency bills, architectural design? I mean, I would rather have BKD...
Does delinquent sewer bills qualify?
To me, it doesn't, but I, you know, I...
Well, does lost revenue for a small business qualify?
Does others qualify?
To me, I'm like, what I lost, I lost.
The hell is others? You can just put whatever...
Well, I have no idea. I mean, here we're gonna get down and pick them.
So they have their pot of money, the way I see it, that Jeff says he's got their pot of money, a specific amount of money. So if we say, yeah, we're fine with approving that part of it and they decide what they want to spend it on and it qualifies, then they can go buy it.
But I'd still, would rather have BKD take this and go through them and tell us. And some of these...
That's what we wanted to do from the get-go. We wanted it to go BKD from the get-go, saying it qualifies or doesn't qualify. Because if it doesn't qualify, we don't even have to worry about setting our wheels on it.
Yeah, so but now you're saying, now you're saying we should go over this first and then go...
No, I never said that.
That's what I was getting at.
That's because that's what our procedure is, it has to come to us first. Michael came to us first. And then we sent to BKD and they said, yes, it qualifies. Then it comes back to us saying, okay.
So in that circumstance, you're saying, yes, I want to buy iPads. I'm going to send it through BKD to see that it qualifies for CARES. In his circumstance, if it would not qualify for CARES, you're still telling Michael to purchase the iPads, but you're going to pay them for them out of sales tax or somewhere else.
Not necessarily.
Well, then we're letting our vendors on the hook because we know we have ordered these.
I know.
So that's not, that's not a business.
That's what I said, we're not following our own procedure, because he's already buying them.
Well...
I asked you last Thursday if you want me to go ahead and order those and you said yes. So that's what I did.
Well, I didn't agree with the procedure, but I knew they were still qualified.
Well, that would be kind of like the city coming to the city manager or whoever approves purchases to make sure that they're on board with making the purchase before they would bring it to us for CARES Act funding.
Geez, I don't know what we're gonna do here.
Yeah, a lot of counties are also, again, if you just kind of step back and say, we want to accept an application, which means at that point, we will have reviewed the application. BKD will have reviewed the application, we've said, yes, it qualifies. We bring it to the commission, the commission can approve it. At that point, they go and purchase it and then as long as it still meets the criteria that they originally, you know, presented, then at that point, we reimburse that cost. So that, in that case, you're not having, we're not having to go through it twice. And the only difference is the applicant still has to spend the money versus an advance purchase where we give them the money upfront. So our recommendation, kind of to eliminate going back and forth, because I think Kristen's right in the fact that with the internal purchase, those costs are gonna be incurred by the county versus if the county agrees with the purchase, someone goes and purchases it and for whatever reason it comes back and doesn't qualify, then you could potentially have risk there of, you know, them making a complaint or something at that point. So our recommendation would be to go ahead and just open up the application process, make sure they go through it. We can review it, we bring it to you and say, yes, this qualifies. And then you still have the option to approve or deny before the applicant has purchased it. So that would be our recommendation there.
I've never said anything besides reimbursements. I just wanted to give them the okay and then once they buy it, they'd still have to submit it for reimbursement. We're not gonna give them the money ahead of time.
No.
So that's exactly what I was talking about. And this is what we were talking about before, is that it should go through. And I don't know which one came first, the horse or the cart here, chicken or the egg, whatever it is. But if y'all didn't want to mess with it if we're not gonna approve it, we didn't want to mess with it if it didn't qualify. So it was like, alright, who's gotta go through it first?
Them.
Yeah, we don't, we certainly don't mind reviewing the items beforehand, whether they're internal or external. I think the thought on the internal purchases is there were some large dollars, just wanting to be sure that everything was, I guess everybody's on the same page. If you want us to review everything before it comes to you, we can certainly do that as well.
I mean, that's how I'd like to do it, especially for the municipalities.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, you talked about small businesses next week and I don't know that I'm ready to approve any of them. I mean, I'm gonna want to see the applications and that, for me, it's no longer blind. I mean, they're gonna have to have just cause for every expense that they're wanting reimbursed for.
And you can change it to open, you know, it just really ought to be however you want to do it.
If you guys want to keep it blind, I mean, I guess we can. But how much money do we have for small businesses?
$200,000.
I think the Phase Two was $200,000.
And that was $5,000 max.
Yeah, I thought it was $5,000.
So I don't know how many requests we've got. I know we've got requests for more than that, but I guess right now that would be the maximum we could reimburse.
You tell me how many...
There's eight we have on the list right now. And I'm not sure if there's a few that have come in yesterday that are small business or not.
Yeah, there's quite a few small businesses.
A bunch of them over $5,000 too, don't they? Oh, yeah.
Well, that's...
It's from eight different organizations. We just break out the different categories there.
That makes sense.
And there are some testing options in here that you guys may want to discuss on their own as to whether or not you want to do that testing or not do that testing, that type of testing, how you want to do that. And that may not be a blind process as well. I mean, we've received a couple of different options as far as additional testing, but that may not be a discussion that you can have blindly. So those are some of the ones that she was alluding to earlier that are fairly large purchases and if that's the type of testing that you want to do. So that may be a discussion that you need to open it up and you may want those people in the room to talk about those and discuss that with you.
So all these below the ones we're gonna approve, the Bs and Cs and Es, I mean, are all those, we're just waiting on stuff there and you think those will be coming forward pretty quick? Or are they waiting to get approval on those as well?
Yeah, that first...
Some of those are very close. And there were a few things where like a particular organization had a long list of multiple items and rather than bringing them to you piecemeal, we wanted to try to get all the documentation from them first and then be able to present the entire request at one time rather than present to you the things that they had receipts for and hold off on the things that they didn't have receipts for. So I think several of these are very close. It's gonna be the big items like the 1.1 million, the $100,000 for the testing services, the $328,000 for the mobile testing unit are kind of the big items that are either partially spent or not spent yet. And the rest of those are a variety of things where we're missing different pieces of documentation. But like I said, a lot has been coming through the last couple days that we're trying to get through. So I think that list of outstanding items will be a lot smaller. But again, as new things come in, if they don't have documentation, then the list grows again. So it's just constantly churning.
And then when will we reallocate funds that haven't been spent? Or when will we know what funds haven't been spent in those phases and what we need to reallocate into other items?
So Julie, would you be ready to have that discussion after Tuesday? If we have a September 30th deadline for some of these, can we group those together by type and decide what funding we have left over in some of those and if we need to reallocate funding?
Absolutely, yes.
And the same way with some of the subrecipient agreements. I don't think we've hit our 10-day mark, but that'd be an ongoing add-back to the budget, I guess, once we know.
Exactly. Yeah, we could just kind of get a status as of 9:30. Here's where we are, any kind of reallocation for Phase Three? And then one question I had, so for these items that are in the small business where they currently say lost revenue, my recollection was we were not going to cover any of that. So I'm just interested as to whether we would even want to go back and ask for additional information or go ahead and let those folks know that they're not eligible at this time?
As you guys talked about in Phase Two for sure, none of the unemployment would be reimbursed or lost revenue. So I guess she's asking you, would you consider opening that back up or are you keeping that closed?
Yeah, if you open it up to lost revenue, you're, we could have millions and millions and millions of dollars. I mean, I, I'm not eligible, but I lost over $200,000 while I was closed. That's just, you know, that's just part of being a business person. I, you know, I don't know where you'd stop on lost revenue. I mean, you've got the restaurants, you've got the hospitals, you've got, I mean, everybody has lost revenue. So how do you differentiate who is worthy?
You know, it is an eligible cost under the CARES Act, but even the, inspect, one of the staff members from the Department of Treasury on a call that I was on, he even admitted that it's a hard thing to quantify and it's a hard thing to support what the number is that you've lost, for some more than others. But he even recommended that it's probably easier to deal with expense reimbursements versus lost revenue. It's, a lot of times that number is just too wishy-washy. How can you prove how much revenue you've lost? And in some cases, it's fairly straightforward, like some that we've seen from a nonprofit organization where they're receiving a fee for a particular service for people that come in on an ongoing basis, day after day, week after week, and they know what they charge and they know what the regular schedule is. If you think about it like a tuition cost or something like that, that's predictable because you know what it is. But for revenues for a lot of businesses, you know, it's hard to know how they come up with that number.
Yeah, I'd rather support, I mean, you know, a lot of them, they still have to pay their rent. And then new businesses also have a business loan. So I was talking to one downtown and, you know, he, he lost, well, he still had to pay his rent, he still had to pay the bank for his business loan. I talked to another and I think her bank gave her 60 days on her business loan. So to me, you know, that's, those are expenses they incurred and plus utilities that... A new business, that can really hurt. I just don't know how you figure lost revenue.
Because our goal would be to, you know, to the extent that we can move into October with a little more certainty on anything that we know for sure that we're, you know, we're not going to fund, you know, we can kind of put those still, you know, on the list. We can let those folks know that it wasn't eligible and go ahead and move forward. Just I want to keep things on the list if you know for sure you are not gonna plan on funding it.
And none of these small businesses have received PPP loans or...
Well, we would have to, so one thing we could do for Tuesday, if we want to go ahead and bring forward all of these small businesses that are on hold with all of these items and go through at that point in time and, you know, let you all weigh in and decide if there's anything we want to bring forward. And then if not, those would, you know, be denied and then we move into Phase Three knowing kind of, you know, here's the next round of eligible funding.
Leanne, you haven't really denied any of them that have gotten a PPE loan yet at this point, right?
No, we have not. Are you talking small businesses or just anyone in general?
The small businesses.
Small businesses.
Yeah, the small businesses. We really haven't reviewed these in detail since the small businesses were on hold at this point. So no, we haven't really eliminated anybody yet. All of them are here on the list.
Because you've got some here for payroll and if you got a PPP loan... And if you got a PPP loan, that's what I used it for, was payroll.
Exactly.
Right, right. Well, and I'll tell you, I think at least one of the ones on here for small business, I think was just kind of picking numbers of what they thought they needed, almost like as if this was a loan program, and, you know, without much description of where they were coming up with their numbers. So as we start reviewing any of these other applications in detail, I think you're going to see that we won't be bringing forward 100% of what's been requested.
So one thing we can do for Tuesday is all of these items that are in the 174,000, we will start reviewing those. If there's any questions, I mean, currently under Phase 2, lost revenue's not eligible. You know, so those would be just based on the process, not eligible. So we'll pull those out, and then we'll give you a full list of anything that we have receipts for. We'll give you an update on where we stand, and then, you know, what the parameters will be for Phase 3, which is really basically the, that we'll review applications prior to spending the money, and then we will still do the reimbursement. And we can provide that process on Thursday. Does that seem reasonable?
So you guys will concentrate on the small business and bring you that back, and the deadline will have been, so that they know all of those. I mean, I don't know, Leanne, Julie, I hate to put you on, would you be able to do that for the Fs, too, for the non-profits?
Yeah, I mean, I think we just need to, I mean, I think we need to kind of, in essence, clean up this list. That it's basically, as of the end of September 30th, you know, either they've still not provided information, they've been put forward, or they, you know, they don't qualify based on Phase 2 eligibility criteria.
Okay, Thursday?
Yeah.
The deadline is there?
Sounds like we're going to be busy. Probably you can't go to Texas.
I'll be here next week. But if you guys want to go ahead and approve each one of those up until the Fs today, that would be, give them something.
Did I have a conflict, or?
Oh.
No, there's no conflict.
You guys are good, I'll just approve all of them at once.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I know that we approved A-Dash 00306, C-Dash 00177, D-Dash 04-Dash 02, and D-Dash 10-Dash 04.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then do you guys want to have a discussion about the testing options? There's three that have presented testing options. Is that something you want to have more in-depth discussion about? I know that they have been asking if they can come up and talk about them. We told them at this time it was blind. If you guys don't want to make that testing options blind, we can open that up, and they can come up here to discuss what they've presented. We're kind of, all three are different. One's just a one-time, like, two-day testing. One's a mobile site, like a trailer that we could use beyond. The other one, I haven't really seen the in-depth one, but.
So do I have a conflict on any of those?
Um, yes, you do.
So, obviously, I guess that was where I was kind of going earlier, because I mean, obviously, these expenses are large. And so we had allotted, what, half a million dollars for hospitals and clinics and?
Yeah, was it half a million? I don't remember that.
Yeah.
And Phase 2.
Julie, do you remember what the allocation in Phase 2 was for hospitals and medical centers?
Yeah, it was half a million.
Okay.
So that can get you very far here. And so obviously, I think as we look at reallocating money, we could look to move that around. I mean, we obviously know that some of the Catholic schools aren't going to use some of their funding, and so just don't know.
Well, and I think it's concept, too, of what type of testing you want to do. I mean, one is a proposal for ongoing testing. One's just a two-day, you know, testing event where people can come in and get tested, and then they're going to be gone again. So what type of testing is it that you want to focus on? And what you want to do is going to make a difference in which ones you fund or you don't?
I think they need to all come up and give a presentation on what they propose.
Is that something you want to do next week?
Not really, but.
Possibly next.
Just being honest.
Possibly next Thursday. Try not to do it on the same day as your larger agenda, but see if they have availability to come up and discuss their plans next Thursday.
Is that 15 minutes each, or is it longer?
Like I said, I have not seen the in-depth applications on either one. I don't know how quickly they can discuss it or not.
I don't know. That'd be the eighth?
Yes.
Be okay with that. You guys are, so.
And those Thursday meetings start at 8:00. So do you want to give BKD time at the beginning? Or you want, so maybe schedule them at 8:30 and 9:00, or?
Is there just one, or two, or three?
I think there's three total applications. One is probably a little more self-explanatory. Like I said, it's kind of a two-day event of them coming in and running a site, and then leaving again. So that one may not entail a lot of discussion.
And if you don't, if you don't mind, if we could listen in, because that would also help us probably not ask them questions.
Oh, yeah. I just didn't know if you guys had things to present on Thursday, if you wanted to do your presentation first, or if you want to wait till the end, and do yours at the end? Just so scheduling-wise, I know what time to bring the others in.
Yeah, we can wait, because I feel like at that point, if there's anything we need to, you know, recalibrate or adjust based on those discussions, we can incorporate that. So I would let them come first, just, I mean, we can wait.
So we could start those at 8:00 and maybe give them 20 minutes?
20 minutes, yeah.
Or if they wanted to do it by video, they could do that as well.
That might be a little hard to get BKD and them on the video at the same time. We can try that. Yeah.
I'm just saying, I don't know, somebody's got to travel or whatever.
Right.
So.
Well, we can, I mean, we can certainly, you know, get caught up from Kristin and Debbie. If y'all need the video space, that's fine. Just let us know what works for you.
Debbie won't be here next week.
She's not going to be here. She's going to leave it to me to do, but yes.
Yeah, good luck.
Unless we chain her.
No. I'll break it.
To her desk.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get these three scheduled in.
Yeah.
First, and then we'll let you listen in, and then we'll do your part after that. And so I want to bring back then that idea of the, then these are open. Those three are open, obviously. Do you want to be open on the small business and the nonprofits? Do you want to keep them blind? Because I heard you maybe want to see their applications, you know? So there's no wrong or right to that part. It's just up to you guys.
Well, BKD has scored the small business application.
After they go through them, they will, yes. They were waiting until they had them all.
Yeah.
So just, my two thoughts here. Lost revenue, rent, utilities, I mean, it's all in how you put it in the application. I mean, it's all basically the same. So, I mean, if you lost revenue, or whether you paid rent, or a lot of other different things. So I don't see those really any different. So everybody's got rent, or they got a payment, or whatever, so. Anyway, I'd like, but they're going to, you know, if they get denied, they're going to write something different. If they're really eager to get it. But, I mean, they're still limited on 5,000 unless we change that.
Sure.
And it's not going to take somebody too long to watch a couple of commission meetings and change their application and resubmit it.
Are you guys open to seeing them, or do you want to keep it blind?
I think I'd almost rather keep it blind, just, I don't know. Take them on their merit. If BKD is scoring them, and they say, well, this, you know, this really doesn't meet the criteria, then we just say, fine.
I'd rather keep it blind.
Yeah, we can continue to do that.
I'd rather keep it blind and keep it very objective that way. So do we have a, what is your total score? What's the best score you can get? I'm going to pick an arbitrary number of 100. So do we have a bottom number that will stop at to where we're, you know? Well, they do qualify, but it's kind of iffy, so. At 50, or 25, or?
I think somewhere around 30 was our maximum. I don't have that in front of me at the moment.
Yeah, I believe, I mean, I was going to say, it's between 25 and 30 points that you can receive. One of the things that we have to look at is some of the questions. So, for example, correct me if I'm wrong on this, Leanne, but some of the questions where you could score, if you were like a private school, you might not, it might not be applicable to you. So we have to kind of adjust the scoring accordingly. But, I mean, the only time the scoring's going to really come into play is, I mean, in this particular case, where you've got, you know, $200,000 worth of items, and, or you've got $200,000 allocated, and you have $400,000 worth of requests. So one thing we can add is in a column on the scoring, so you can see, and it may be more of a ranking of who's, you know, who scored highest, because sometimes you'll look at something, and you'll say, well, 16 is not a very high score. But, you know, kind of compared to that category, it could be a high score. So we can add a column for scoring that lets you know how their application's ranked among other like applications, if that makes sense.
So my question is, we have $200,000, right, for small business?
Yes.
And if we don't have $200,000 in requests, if they qualify even with a 1, they get reimbursed. They get a 1 out of 30.
Well, that's up for you all to decide.
Yeah, but we would have to provide, yeah, right now, that's true. I mean, we haven't had anybody that we've said, typically, if they're going to score that low, there's usually something else that would make them not eligible. What's going to happen is if you get, like, in the case of the municipalities, where, you know, you have, what is it, over, you know, or even in the case, we've got 2.5 million dollars that's awaiting initial information. So, I mean, I think it would be helpful for us to put on the sheet.
20% of the points, they don't qualify.
Julie, would you say if they wouldn't get at least half of the points, they probably don't qualify at some point?
Something's going to kick them out.
Yeah, there's usually, yeah, there's usually something else happening.
We do other grant requests and stuff in when we're grading them or ranking them. And it may be something as big as 400 points, but if they don't qualify at 232 points, whatever number, then the money just doesn't get given out. So that's what I was trying to figure out. So, I mean, if they get a, if they get a C and they're passing, okay, well, it's not the highest grade, but they still pass. But if it's, if they get an F, then they, too bad, go back and try again, whatever, right?
Right now, we have seven small businesses that have requested, right?
Eight, yeah.
Yeah, but a lot of them are over $5,000, and 5,000 was the limit. So we're not even.
Yeah, some of them, some of them don't even, I mean, it's lost revenue, so they get kicked out.
And several of them aren't going to apply, or, I mean, aren't going to be eligible. I mean, I could tell you.
So I mean, you're talking, you know.
Just looking, some of them are not going to be eligible.
25,000.
Maybe it's not even a question, it's going to be pertinent whenever we get all the rankings. So we'll just look at it then.
And like she said, she got seven yesterday, and the 30th is the deadline, and you know how people wait till the last deadline. So you're going to get more, but doesn't mean that that won't qualify.
No, yeah.
So Julie, I think we're still looking at the small business and the non-for-profit for Thursday, and the?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, I'm sorry, with the ranking on there, and keeping them blind, is what I'm hearing.
Okay.
So I'd prefer.
And I think what we're going to do, too, is, unless you prefer us not to do this, I was thinking, any of these items, we could also have a column that if there's a conflict, just we'll make a little asterisk.
Yeah.
That way we know.
Yeah.
That we can keep track of that.
That'd be great.
Yep.
And then after that, we'll talk about Phase 3, and then maybe the budget alignment, where we are after that's approved, or not approved for small business. And we'll have a better idea of the schools by then, I think. The only thing I'll mention, I've not gotten back the sub-recipient from Jeff City yet. Have you guys seen that?
The Jeff City one just came in yesterday. So I'll send that to you as soon as we get off the call.
Okay. And obviously, a lot of the private schools, I haven't got back. I'm anticipating not getting any of those back either, for the parochial schools, that is.
And then, Leanne, can you send me the contact information for the three testing applications, so we can get those meetings set up?
Yes, I sure will.
And I'm sorry, I'm going to give you one more. For the ones they approved this morning, if I could get those applications, because the paper.
Yeah, I just sent those to you right before the meeting.
Oh, okay. Thank you, appreciate it.
Sure, absolutely.
And then we'll get the sub-recipient agreements going on those. So then, I think a couple of these were, or maybe one was a private school, so we can note an order for them, or at least contact them after they sign the sub-recipient agreement. So will we have that maybe Thursday this week? The sub-recipient, or was that what you emailed me, too, this morning, Leanne?
Yes, the sub-recipient agreements are in your email.
All right, appreciate it.
This morning, yeah.
And then we'll also send for Thursday the recommended application process, unless you want to table that for Tuesday.
Modifying the application process?
Right, as far as potentially not having to be reimbursable to.
There should still be a reimbursable, but possibly approving an application.
Approving an eligible application.
Yeah. I think that, Leanne, correct me if I'm wrong. I know even like some of the schools, they'd send in, they want like 100 Chromebooks. They may have, and that sounds like an eligible expense, 100 Chromebooks, but they may have 100 to 50 of them already in their location. They just want an extra 100. But yet, they don't really have any kids at home right now. So is that, I mean, if we say that sounds like an eligible expense, but when it goes through your all's discretionary process. but when it goes through your all's discretionary process and you just say, okay, that's a little bit too many Chromebooks for that school district, then what is what I'm saying?
Yeah, so we actually, in that particular case, we actually asked that question of the state. And as long as it is a reasonable request, so for example, purchasing Chromebooks for a potential outbreak to support, you know, the distance learning, that is gonna be eligible. However, if you, to your very point, Debbie, if maybe it's not 150 that they need, they only need 50. So that's where, you know, the commission would have to weigh in on how many is reasonable. So the fact that you can purchase them in advance, even though you don't currently have an outbreak, given the environment that we're in, that's a reasonable cost. The thing that the commission would have to weigh in on, and obviously BKD could too, but ultimately is how many. So does that help at all?
Yeah, yeah, that's good, that it's. So that's just what potentially could happen, you know, so.
Yeah.
Guess you could do it 50/50 if you wanted to then.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have to do.
Luckily, Anne said you, I guess you could, or Julie said that you can just say, based on what we're hearing, we would approve that application to go forward, but, you know, barring any, what would, what'd you say, Julie? Some kind of clause in there to keep us protected, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, the the key thing there is there is some federal language about reasonable cost and it's reasonable in the circumstance, meaning that, you know, given the pandemic, it would be reasonable to be prepared, but, you know, maybe you don't need, you don't need 100, you only need 50. And maybe that's to your point, you know, you do half now and if you see that you need more later, then you can always come back.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we can just allocate like half of a request or 80% or something.
So. All right, you guys have any more questions? You know where we're going?
What time are we gonna meet on Thursday then? Y'all are gonna have the
Julie, what do you see on the list for this Thursday?
That's not, that's next, not this week.
Probably next week.
So for this Thursday, we will draft the process, just to be sure we're all on the same page.
No, I'm fine. I was thinking we were having hospitals come in this, no, I'm fine, never mind. It's next Thursday, it's what?
Yeah, but you'll still have some stuff on this Thursday then to draft the process and I didn't, we'll just see how many more you get in too.
Yeah, whatever, yeah, whatever we can process where they've sent in information, we'll try to get as much of that on the agenda for Thursday as we can.
Okay, yeah.
I just got another meeting next Thursday, 11:30 that I have to be at, so.
And he was talking about next Thursday. I know that's probably gonna be a bigger one with the nonprofits and the
Okay.
So.
So we're talking about October 1 or October 8?
October 8.
So the process and stuff this Thursday, the meetings with the testing people next Thursday?
Yes. Right, okay.
Okay.
All right, ladies, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Are we there, were students?
Have a good day.
Do what?
I said, are we there, were students?
No.
Is there, when I make questions, do we get to ask?
No, I think we need, that's why we hire and we need to ask. I don't, hell, we've never done this before, so. Okay, wait for Debbie, okay. Okay. Okay.
I was gonna say, if you want to do Larry or something, you can come back.
Yeah, where's Larry? Let's
Hey, Larry.
All right, I'm gonna. Yeah, well, there you go.
Those chairs are more comfortable.
Okay. Approval of court order of no parking on portion of Gateway Drive.
This is one that we brought to you earlier where we had both parking on, or no parking on both sides. And you asked us to review it and we did, we took it off the one side. So let's work forward for just to do the parking on the one side and then we'll reevaluate after a period of time and see if we need to change anything.
Yep.
Good.
Yep.
Maybe we approve the court order on Gateway Drive.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Approval and signing the final closeout change order, 2019 asphalt overlay program.
This is for the 2019 asphalt overlay. As we previously discussed with you, we had some issues with asphalt surfaces there. We put down a treatment plan on it and the asphalt company that actually didn't work, I agreed to take that out of their payment. So this is a change order reflecting that payment. It was $900,000, 978, 976. We'll start over. It was $900,768.73. We're doing a $33,338.60 deduct. So the final contract amount would be $867,430.27. And this is the final closeout.
Okay.
Yes.
Maybe that we approve and sign the final closeout change order number one on the asphalt overlay program.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Amendment of Cole County Traffic Safety Code?
What we're looking at there is a change to our traffic safety code. We've had some issues with commercial traffic down in Canterbury with heavy trucks going over that road, going to Mida as well as down in, I also asked Eric to look at it for down in the Osage City area where we've had some issues down there. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna take these changes back to the Traffic and Safety Board, working with Jill. I think we've got some language that we're gonna take back to the Traffic and Safety Board, get their approval and then we'll bring it back to y'all for amendment to the code.
What we need to do is add a section addressing commercial vehicles along with the schedule, which it'll lay out the locations of those roads and then you all sign a court order.
So I got, uh, did you get a copy of this? It's a petition from Tanner Bridge. I didn't count how many of there are on here, but I'd say it's almost the whole road. I emailed you, I scanned it and emailed it to you and you, so.
That's what we're working through the process to be able to address. Right now, our traffic safety code doesn't allow us to address commercial traffic. We have to amend it.
This has been a problem for a while. We've been talking about, trying to find, because they follow their GPS. I think it's gonna stop a few trucks, but some of them, I don't even know if they speak English.
Well, the other thing you all are going to have to determine too is fines, because you can get, do up to a $500 fine. So the trucks that buy like can be taken. And that, you know, may be a deterrent. But anyway, so that's something else that we're going to bring to you. With that petition, Jeff, Eric and I were thinking that would be really useful to have it.
I, it sure also, I emailed it to you, I don't know where the original needs to go.
Right.
Lynn, you probably need a copy to put in the minutes.
She should have the original.
Yeah, just give that to Lynn. But where that will be useful too is with the Traffic Safety Committee, because it'll go to the evidence that
Okay, so the scanned email I sent you all, if it doesn't come through, let me know, we'll make sure we get it, but it's
What we're trying to move forward, and you know, like I said, off of purely off state statutes, we don't have any avenue to be able to address it as long as they meet the state requirements for its weight and its distribution. This will allow us on a locality in the county that we can set this up where we can maybe limit some of the traffic or try to. Like you say, until the GIS or GPS systems change, we're gonna continue to have a problem. I know, I don't know what we've had down in Osage City lately, but you know, the issues we had down there where they got trucks stuck trying to turn them around, so tearing up the road and everything else, so.
Yeah, we've been able to make reports on those and at least go after the companies when they're in trying to fix the road. But I don't know if you've been down Tanner Bridge lately, but it's there, I've met trucks there a lot lately and they're not, they're not obeying the speed limit, they're flying through. The road's not wide enough for a big truck in the first place, so.
No.
It's it's a legitimate concern, we've been trying to figure out how to address it, so.
That's what we're trying to do, move forward where we can, get something where we get some deed to it to where it's
If you get strong enough fine, some of those trucks, if they're all coming from the same place pretty quick, one or two of those get stopped and have to pay a fine, that could deter them more than anything.
Well, then they probably would cause on top too.
Yeah, so.
So just to keep you abreast of what we're doing with it, like I said, we're in a transition stage here with Eric taking over my position. So we're moving forward, we're still trying to keep things moving, so.
Appreciate it.
If you don't need me, I'm out of here.
Will that be by petition then, or how how will we do that?
Well, just the same way as you would say installing a stop sign or changing the speed limit. It goes to the Traffic Safety Committee that comes out of the server recommendation. I'm gonna amend the code because there is a state statute that says we can regulate commercial vehicles. So I'm going to have that amendment and you all will be voting on amending the code and sign a court order to do that particular road. And you can add additional roads because then there's a schedule attached to the code that references the locations.
Is that a, what what's considered a commercial vehicle then?
Local delivery can still be allowed. You know, if there's local trucks, it's one that a drive-through.
Through traffic, I think, is what they're more concerned about.
Well, and the statute says, has an exception for it unless it's local delivery. But then what you do in your schedule is you just, you determine the weight of the metal truck. Maybe it's 12,000 pounds, maybe, you know.
Here's some of that dump trucks and stuff going through there, places that get deliveries from tractor trailers, they can go through there. It's a local delivery, it's not for through traffic. And they're taking the shortcuts, either coming from Mida or going to Mida most of the time and that's just where the GPS takes them.
Right, and that's what
And it don't matter what kind of signs you put up, you can look what happened down in West Valley. So we're we're just trying what we can here.
If they've got their GPS set up on the shortest route, it's gonna take them that away, you know, whether it's a mile shorter or whatever. It's like I said, and we tried down in Osage City, they've worked with Garmin and some of those others. We used to have a guy that worked at the city that had some input with Garmin, but to my knowledge, I don't think it's ever been changed yet, so.
And you just need to be cautious. I mean, you say local delivery, but there may be dump trucks coming through there too, so.
Yeah.
That are taking a shortcut.
Like I said, if the local traffic, if it's dump trucks that are locally going through, they're just using it as a shortcut. If they get stopped and they can't prove that they're going to someplace on Canterbury, you know, and they get ticketed, that word will get around quickly to locals, you know.
Say they'll be pretty pissed.
Yeah. But they won't drive through there again.
Doubt that. Doubt that.
Well, they they get enough of the tickets, so.
They'll have a ticket book that says Tanner Bridge on it.
Well, the other thing is
Here's where I'm going.
In the Defense of Sheriff's Department, we don't have enough deputies for them to be able to set somebody up there. We run into this with speed and everything else out in the county. People are gonna drive what they feel comfortable driving, you know, that's a known fact. And that's why we use the 85, 85 percentile in setting speed limits. That's what 85% of the people are using. Now, there's exceptions, you know, to all rules, but, you know, we're trying to set it to where it's the normal traffic. Truck traffic through this area, that's gonna be a whole new issue, so something we haven't addressed in the past.
It's just gotten worse, though. There used to be nobody going through there, but now you have GPS.
Yeah.
That's all they're following. And then they think it's a shortcut and they gotta fly through there. And there's people on tractors and stuff. There's the one had to pass them on Tanner Bridge. There's no place to pass anybody on Tanner Bridge.
No.
Maybe by the, maybe by the bridge is about the only place, so.
Yeah, one, a few spots.
Yeah.
You know, it's a typical county road. It it curves around, follow the old wagon trails a day is gonna buy, so, you know.
Well, we only have 30 foot of right of way on most of it still. That was one of the first group of roads I got to pave, driving.
At least the first part, that was done through the old road districts and special road districts. Yes, there's only 30 foot there.
So we're working on it.
If we were gonna upgrade that road, we're gonna have to go back and get additional right of way all the way through there.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm leaving this.
Okay, we'll go back to second final reading of budget adjustment number 19.
This is the final reading of this one, it's $17,500. This is for the Department of Health and Senior Services Adult Influenza Vaccination Rates Grant that the Health Department received.
Maybe that we sign court order number 19.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
First reading of budget adjustment number 20.
Uh, this one's for $19,632.50. It's going into Rota Bridge for an insurance check for the vehicle, I think that was the fire. Uh, this is just the first reading, it'll be held over for 10 days.
Okay.
Pretend I asked in there.
I'll make that part of my scene.
We're done?
Yeah.
And then we'll go back to the sub-recipient agreements.
Yes.
We did get two of them for the ones that was approved today. So one of them is the City of Jeff and it's $15,251.36.
Maybe we sign the sub-recipient agreement with the City of Jefferson.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye. Okay.
And the second one is Emmanuel Lutheran Church. This is for $6,435.
Maybe that we sign the sub-recipient agreement with Emmanuel Lutheran School.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye. Okay.
All right, so I was at a meeting yesterday on, met with Brandon Alexander, his Chief of Staff, or Scott Fitzpatrick on this Missouri ABLE, which is a program to help disabled individuals try to save and use expenses, cover their expenses in a tax-free account. It does allow other people to put money into their account up to $15,000 per year and it helps people with disabled disabilities, you know, provide for themselves. So anyway, they're trying, gonna try to roll this out over at the chamber, I think, on Monday. So they'd like for us to be there if we could, so anyway. But they're just kinda kicking this off and they're trying to get this going and so, anyway.
What time Monday?
Uh, I'll let you know. They haven't sent me anything on it, but huh?
My next Monday?
Yeah, so. Anyway, but there's some information on it. You guys wanna look at it?
Yeah, Matt told me you had some kind of meeting last Monday, I heard it yesterday, I guess.
Yeah, it was yesterday.
So, he was kinda busy. So, yeah, so let us know what time on Monday.
Yeah, I think they were thinking about 11 or something, but anyway.
Anything else?
Nope. Maybe stay in recess till 4:30.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.